But if it snows before, and then does it go to May first that they're supposed to be able to mount?
Well, I was looking at you, but then you were looking at your computer. So I said, what's he looking at?
Hi, Steve.
I am going to ask you about the transfer station door.
Oh, that should be the town office.
Oh, is that what that is?
That's for that metal fire door that is fire rated and has the glass in it.
And was that not something that Matt and Ben could install?
Because they needed some assistance with it. It would have been a bit much.
Yes. Well, I'm glad I asked you now, then. Who is on with babies?
No, I think there's a toddler there.
Carol's online. Okay, so.
Right. Everybody ready? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Uh, good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, April 10th, uh, meeting of the Reedfield Select Board. I'd just like to start off by, uh, reminding the select board members, uh, to please speak clearly into your microphone. So everyone at home can hear. And if you're at home, uh, please remember to mute yourself, uh, for the sake of our recording. Uh, just make sure that you are on mute. Uh, and if you are, uh, called out to speak, uh, you can unmute yourself. Uh, we begin our meeting tonight, um, with, um, sorry, yes, the minutes, excuse me, uh, item twenty-three, one oh four, the minutes from the select board, uh, minute, uh, meeting in March twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-three.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes with one correction that I sent to Angelica earlier today. It was just a naming issue.
Excellent. Uh, it's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, um, uh, select board, uh, minutes from the March twenty-seventh meeting with, uh, submitted changes. Um, is there any further discussion? As always, just want to say thank you very much, Angelica, for doing that, getting those out to us. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Thank you very much. And Carol, yes, I see you are in the affirmative. Thank you. Our second item is twenty-three, one oh five warrants thirty-nine through forty. I think we moved to the new Catherine Woodsum era of reviewing the warrants. Is that?
Old one, right?
Yes, it's thirty-nine, no?
That was still Carol.
Oh, it's still Carol. Oh, my goodness, Carol. I'm so sorry. Didn't mean to skip your last, uh, time. Um, if you want to go over, uh, the warrant, Carol, uh, speak about that. Or we can also, uh, talk to about it too as well. Uh, you're on mute. So if you want to unmute yourself, yes, indeed. Gotcha. All right.
I thought they said last time was my last time, so I did not even look it over. I'm sorry. I'm in Indiana with family and I'm kind of squeezing this in. Whole lot of stuff.
No worries. No worries. Not at all. We'll take care of that for you. We got your back.
And do this in about?
It'll cost you when you get back.
Perhaps. Something delicious.
Okay, so orange there. I want to make.
Thirty-nine and forty.
Thirty-nine and forty. Get to what it says in there. Okay, so there were two state fee warrants, state fees warrants. There was payroll in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-three cents. And then the accounts payable was fifty-one thousand, three eighty-six and five cents. And any items of note? We did have one thousand, nine hundred and five dollars to Quirk Auto for some repair to the F-five fifty truck. And other than that, there is nothing out of, uh, of the ordinary. So I would make a motion to approve warrants thirty-nine and forty in the total amount of seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve warrants thirty-nine and forty in the total amount of seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Excellent. And Carol, you are in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Uh, excellent. Hold for just a second. There we go. All right. We move now to the select board communications, five minutes, uh, in case any members of the select board would like to address the public. Go ahead, Sean.
This is Sean. I just wanted to thank the rec board for hosting the annual, um, Easter egg hunt on Saturday at the fairgrounds. It was very well attended. Another great, uh, guest Easter bunny for the event. And, uh, I thank them all for doing that.
Excellent. I think that was great. Uh, excellent, uh, idea. Anyone else?
I, I have, um, one thing I.
Go ahead, Steve.
The update to select board and folks on, and that is that, um, the week before last, I met with the board chairs from the other towns from Wayne, uh, Mount Vernon and Manchester. And, uh, the purpose of our meeting was to talk in general terms about, uh, just areas in which the towns could cooperate. But also we wanted to look at, uh, some ways that we could work collaboratively with the RSU to try to increase some community access to both their indoor and outdoor facilities. And, uh, so we came up with some proposals and as it happens, the, uh, facilities use policy is up for review. It's five-year annual review and the policy committee met, uh, last week. And I went to that with our suggestions and it was, it was a very productive conversation. I think, I think we made some real progress and, um, you know, we, we talked, uh, as select board members that we felt that it was important to try to help make the schools more of the community centers that they were before the pandemic. And that we wanted to work collaboratively with the schools to make that happen. And, and so, um, it was the first look at this. And so what they did is they took tons of notes. But, uh, so this is really a work in progress. We'll be meeting again in early May to look at, um, possible revisions to the facilities use pro, um, policy. But, uh, three main areas that I would say there, we had pretty good agreement that we could definitely work something out. And the first is, uh, community use of the restrooms down by the football, the track during rec, rec board, like rec soccer and things like that. And I think they heard our concerns about the lack of access and they're going to come back with a proposal to address that. I think that looks good. And, um, also coming up with a process that will allow small groups of adults to a- access school gymnasiums for things like basketball and volleyball, adult basketball, volleyball, et cetera, without needing to have a school staff member or custodian present. So that means that there would not be a charge. Um, you wouldn't have to pay for that. And we just had to figure out how the signups and access badges will be handled. And that's something that I've talked to Eric a little bit about, and undoubtedly I have to talk to the other towns also. Um, we talked about the possibility of maybe having an access badge at each of the town offices. Um, and towns working collaboratively with the, um, facilities director and, uh, um, student services coordinator at school to schedule things to make sure no, there's no conflicts. I'm kind of a shared spreadsheet kind of thing or something. We'll see. And then we, the last thing we also mentioned was the possibility of, uh, opening the school, um, either the gym or maybe the hallways at the high school for senior citizens during the winter hours to give them a safe indoor place to walk that's relatively flat. So those are all areas that, um, I think they're willing to work with us on and we'll hopefully make some progress at that the next meeting in, uh, in early May. I'll keep you posted.
Wonderful.
Awesome.
Great. And continuing sort of the goals that we set for the select board to increase that communication. So thank you very much for that. Um, that's really great. Anyone else? All right.
Quick thing.
Go ahead, Carol.
So, um, it's brought to my attention, uh, resident shared a letter that he had received. Um, it goes along with my repeated, um, questions about open space. And this went to the resident from the Open Space Institute in New York, New York. Um, and it's a very lengthy letter that talks about our donors are a critical part of this conservation success story. And it is remains our absolute committed smart strategic land protection. We need you to join us with a year-end gift. And their goal is a preservation of twelve thousand acre quarter protected land. Um, it closes with, we appreciate your interest in our work and I hope you will join us with a gift today. Um, and then it gives the link where a donation could be made. So I kind of repeat my exact question from last meeting saying, um, the fifty thousand dollar annual expense for the town is lumped within our capital improvements. Um, to me, open space has also always been a concept like where has that come from? It seems to be a national. Um, uh, what I want to call it, a national press. Um, at best, it sounds like it's a charitable donation. At worst, it sounds like a political, um, topic. And I, again, I don't think this belongs in our capital improvement total budget, um, of hundreds and thousands of dollars. And this kind of points to the fact that it's kind of in a national endeavor that has a lot of political um, points to it. And I don't think politics should be anywhere near our town business or our warrant or our dough, our expenses out of municipal funds.
All right. Thank you, Carol. Uh, anyone else want to address the public? All right. Uh, we move now to staff reports. We have ten minutes set aside, uh, for this, the town manager's report and the treasures report. Uh, remember, all of these documents can be found online at reedfieldmain.org under the select board tab. Uh, you click on the April tenth meeting and you can find all of these. Eric, would you like to take it away?
Sure. Thanks, Dennis. I will start with my town manager's report and hopefully these are both, uh, together less than seven minutes. We'll see what we can do.
Okay, yeah.
Um, April tenth report, uh, starting with administration and personnel, uh, budget and warrant development and the comprehensive plan remain, uh, can update our continuing priorities. Uh, I'm looking forward to the day, uh, soon here when we can move on and, and pursue other, uh, projects actively. But, uh, I feel very happy with where things are with the budget and warrant process. Uh, I think that there's been a tremendous amount of work done and we have a good result, uh, but we'll talk more about that later. Um, I do want to welcome, uh, Lucas Hodwell. Uh, he is our new seasonal maintenance employee. So every year we, we bring in a couple of folks to help out, uh, for the summer months. Uh, Lucas is going to be with us through, uh, likely through, um, uh, early July. But, uh, he'll be an asset in that time, I'm sure. Uh, I want to point out, we have a holiday closure for Patriots Day, Monday, April seventeenth, uh, and that's the town office and library closed that day. Uh, and a final point, contract negotiations have begun with ASME ninety-three and our small bargaining unit. So, uh, I just wanted to give an update on that. Uh, Dennis Price and I are working on that. We will, um, as, as appropriate work with the select board and executive session, but contract negotiations, um, are unfortunately a closed door, uh, process. Uh, and we will be working on making sure that we can, uh, try to keep everybody happy and, uh, be reasonable and also keep, um, keep costs in check. So, uh, moving on to roads, traffic, parking and safety, uh, winter road plowing and, uh, treatment. Uh, those are effectively completed, um, fingers crossed. Uh, we are, uh, working with Ellis Construction once again to begin the street sweeping and sand removal process. Uh, the start date on that is TBD. Um, they're trying to work out their schedules. Usually we're able to get, um, things cleaned up in, in May. Uh, sometimes it's been later, but, uh, th- they work with a number of towns and it takes some time to get all the material off the roads in the county. Uh, spring heavy load limits are no longer in place, uh, but I am asking folks to please be careful. If you are driving or moving material yourself, uh, watch out for the rolled shoulders and certain curb cuts. Things are still soft. Uh, the, the frost has gone, but there's still air voids, um, in some places where that, uh, moisture was. So just, uh, please be careful. If something looks rough, uh, try to, try to say, oh, that please. Um, blush, brush clearing is scheduled for Church Road. Notices, uh, were mailed to all abutting property owners detailing the brush work and paving plan. Uh, the select board will need to consider a change order for the paving work, uh, and we'll talk about that later. But basically there's a section of road, uh, that we thought we might be able to pave, uh, without base treatment. But, uh, reviewing that again this spring with, uh, some folks from Pike and our road committee and, and, and maintenance staff. Uh, it became evident that it would be good money after bad to pave a section that had some significant cracking. So we're going to be grinding that area and putting a proper base down, uh, and, and getting the most value out of the pavement that we do put down. So that's, that's an, uh, other business, uh, that I'm hoping we can get taken care of later. Uh, and then we have received preliminary design for the church road sidewalk, uh, that is proposals for both sides of the road. Uh, they are posted on the town website under the road commissioners page. Uh, these are certainly not final plans. They're initial drafts. Uh, and the road committee will be reviewing those this week. Uh, once we have road committee review and that, um, uh, extra set of eyes to make sure we're not putting something out that's just blatantly unworkable or that has, um, some major issues, uh, we can then move forward with scheduling those, uh, public meetings. Uh, to, to, to talk to the public about what those alignments might look like. Uh, moving on to maintenance and transfer station, uh, maintenance staff are excited to be back out in the field. I'm excited to have them back out there. Um, we have been doing some interior projects here at the town office, uh, and, um, uh, plenty of winter maintenance, but they're excited to be outside and, uh, uh, accordingly, they're working on getting our equipment ready. Um, when we prepare for spring, um, maintenance, it includes getting things that we used all winter properly cleaned and put away. Uh, things are washed, things are oiled, uh, things are taken apart and stored properly. Uh, then we'll move on with getting all of our, uh, leaf blowers, weed whackers, chainsaws, pole saws, uh, lawn mowers and other equipment up and running. Um, and, and getting it ready for the season. The, uh, household hazardous waste day, um, uh, is, uh, June, excuse me, July ninth from eight AM to noon.
Nine AM.
Nine AM.
I thought we caught it for eight.
Nope.
Okay, we'll have to fix that.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. We, we want to, yeah. Um, so July eleventh, uh, or just mean July ninth.
July nine, nine.
July.
I shouldn't have interrupted. I'm sorry.
Well, no, it's okay. I just, I'm not sure I agree with the, the time. I think we might have. Anyway, we'll, we'll figure that out. Um, July ninth is the day. Uh, we have signup sheets available at the town office. We're happy to be partnering with other towns. uh who will help defray the cost of uh getting this stuff done for us. Uh, and those include Mount Vernon, Belgrade, Vienna, as well as Fayette and Wayne. So we're bringing in um some other folks to help help with the cost. Um, we also are working with Maine DEP to um uh do a relaunch of our composting program at the transfer station. Uh, compost and food waste are one of the heaviest components outside of glass that shows up in the waste stream. Glass should be in recycling, food waste can't be. If we recycle um more and we compost more, we save tax dollars. It it's that simple. So we're really trying to help people be able to do this at home or at the transfer station if they'd like. Uh, and then um the last thing about the transfer station is that with regret, uh, we are no longer able to offer senior hours at the transfer station on Thursdays. Uh, that is due to concerns about equal access and legal implications of excluding those under age sixty-five. Uh, we will be returning on a temporary basis, uh, at least to start to allowing only contractors and commercial haulers at that facility on Thursdays while we look at ways to try to, uh, you know, make up uh for what is being taken away. Uh, and that might include um uh time uh on Thursday that's open to everybody or uh other other times, but we have to negotiate that with the union. We have to sort it out with staff and the commercial haulers. So lots of moving parts, but we're working on it. Uh, and we will do our best to make sure we we meet the needs of the public. That's my manager's report.
Any questions, concerns, comments, care?
Yeah, Eric, I just have a random question about the, not random at all, because it's about the road postings.
Uh, yes.
Is that coordinated with other towns around us as well? Or is that just, do we do that independent? I'm just curious on how that works.
Sure. Yeah, we do that independently. Um, we we all um uh kind of look to each other at least as far as um, well, what what's this town doing? What's that town doing? But our roads and how we treat our roads is much different than than say a town that's that's, you know, uh that's not Reed Field, uh, that might have different priorities. Uh, but uh we all try to use uh and Reed Field certainly does statistical information, uh, including like heating degree days and uh a thawing index that's actually um worked on in collaboration with a couple of universities to help assess when it is that the damage could start happening to the roads and when it's not going to be happening anymore. So we look at the th- those type of index indices to inform our decision making here in Reed Field anyway.
Thanks.
Yep.
Um, Eric, I just have a quick question. Um, I went to the commissioner's page and I'm looking at the church road proposals and I do see one side is option one, one side is option two. Looks really difficult to figure out. Um, and it's got like eight pages, so we'll ponder over this a bit. Um, but I just wanted to make sure I could find where it is. So I know people that were very eager to see this um would want to know how to find it, but it looks really um complicated. So um, maybe at some point, I'm I'm sure that will happen during some of the discussions with the town folk is just kind of making heads or tails of it, of the pros and the cons. And I did see that there was a separate link for the pros and the cons, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So the engineers, uh, and and we understand that this is a complicated, um, you know, uh, ex- extensive engineering project. Uh, but we need to find a way to communicate clearly with the public. So um, we do have those pros and cons. Uh, we will have some uh top end or or at least um uh uh rough estimates of cost for the two options uh at a, in a summary level, not in a detail level. Um, and that's partly because of federal uh bidding requirements and things like that. But one of the pieces really important here is that we will have engineers at the two main public hearings and one meeting with the select board. So we can all ask them specific questions if appropriate and really get a better understanding of all of this. Um, i- it does take some time to kind of work through it and see where everything is and what the lines mean. Uh, but um, we have some experts to help us do that.
Thank you. I think that pros and cons page will kind of summarize a whole lot better than trying to make out those uh drawings. So thank you.
Yes, it's really good. Uh, I I agree with you, Carol. And for those of you keeping score at home, watching and following us, that link is also on our Facebook page as we speak.
Right.
Cool. Uh, would you like to move on? Uh, unless there are any other questions to your treasures report, sir?
All right. Well, I think I'm short on time and my, with my original estimate, but
Yeah.
Um, uh, so March has been a, was a pretty standard month. Uh, we did complete check reconciliation through the end of the month, no unusual activity. Uh, we're moving on with our audit. Um, uh, we um, we are looking at um uh some investment services uh and looking to what other towns do with investing for things like CDs, uh, SEDARs, treasuries, uh, and other investment tools that we are looking at to invest some of our reserves in to get a return that could be four or five percent, uh, which which would be very helpful, uh, as we try to um make the most of the money we have available. Uh, and then uh budget process is wrapping up. We'll be talking about that uh much more tonight, but uh, the uh important dates with the budget are um, we have a May thirty, um, excuse me, um, a public budget meeting on on May thirty-first, uh, and then voting on June thirteenth. Uh, my comments on um on the month are, it's basically a mixed bag. Uh, we're up in some areas, we're down in others. We have some monthly totals that are looking um a little bit more or less than we would expect, but on the flip side, in a lot of cases, we are seeing uh year-to-date numbers that that are um the the reverse or uh basically we're seeing variation, but it's less variation than we've seen in the past. Uh, and the 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 bottom line really is that even though we are comparing uh month-to-month and year-to-date numbers, the budget is what is most important and we're actually very close uh in most budget categories, the department and division level, uh, when it comes to what we had actually budgeted. So uh, I I'm happy with where we are. Um, I do want to look a little bit more at a couple of areas. Um, I want to keep an eye on transfer station, uh, because expenses there are beyond our control, but they can escalate rapidly if uh if we see tonnages rise. Um, and then we also have some additional expenses um that may just be uh happening earlier than they had in the past for the fire department. And I want to look at a little bit more and find out what those are. But uh overall, I think we're we're again another month uh in which we're in good shape. Our uh checking account uh continues to be uh right about where we would expect it to be uh and higher than it has been in years past. So um, I think that's a good place to be. I don't have anything else to add. Unless there are questions.
Excellent. Any questions on the treasures report?
No, but thank you for giving it in such detail with good ex- clear explanation.
Yes, wonderful. Um, we'd also like to thank our friends uh then at the budget public meeting and hearing. Uh, the cemetery committee and two comprehensive planning committee minutes uh that were submitted by the boards, committees and commissions. Uh, it's always nice um to hear uh about what's going on in those particular areas. Um, we now move to public communication. There is no one here in person. But if anyone online would like to, uh, any of the public would like to address the select board, uh, you can unmute and introduce yourself. Okay, uh, hearing none, we move on to old business. Uh, item twenty-three zero six seven is to discuss the comprehensive plan and update the process. Um, we have ten minutes set aside for this. Um, I want to throw it to you, Eric, uh, if you want, or I can sort of talk a little bit as well, but I feel like either way, we're going to learn about it.
Yeah, well, I'll start Dennis and give some really dry, boring background.
That sounds good. I'll come in and clean it up for you with a little bit of humor.
Best, but just add the juice.
Absolutely.
You can add the juice.
Oh, yeah, that's how I get cleanup.
So we we have been working on the comprehensive plan update since twenty twenty. Um, COVID was was not an easy time for us, but uh we we were able to carry through. And in the select board packet, uh, we have a lot of information that really summarizes where we've been and where we're going. Uh, we um have worked hard to make sure we've had administrative uh actions that make sense and support uh a good process. We've worked to have public hearings, uh, several of those uh also um have uh dozens of comprehensive plan committee meetings that are, were open to the public and remain so. Uh, and also work on special public engagement and outreach activities. Uh, and we started off uh early on with kind of um more of the administrative side of things, getting ready to to launch, having meetings with KV cog, uh, working on um some of that background stuff that needed to happen. Uh, moving into twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we had extensive um uh uh public or um publicly uh held budget, uh, excuse me, comp plan committee meetings. Uh, and then later on in twenty twenty-two, we started moving into the public uh engagement pieces, uh, getting our surveys out, uh, mailings to the public to help um uh educate folks and give them opportunity to c- contribute uh their opinions and perspectives on this. Uh, and then as we moved into twenty twenty-three, we we got more into, back into the public hearings, uh, having uh events on Saturday and Sunday uh afternoons uh and mornings uh to um just make sure that we could catch everybody, because not everybody can attend a committee meeting, uh, whether it's a select board meeting or comp plan at six o'clock on on a, on a, on a Monday or a Wednesday night. So uh, we made sure that we included that type of engagement opportunity. Uh, and now we're getting into the final stages. Uh, we've um incorporated a lot of public feedback, uh, a lot of uh discussion from board and committee members. Uh, not just the comp plan committee, but folks from recreation trails, um, the um um enterprise committee, uh, the historical society, who is not a proper town committee, but one we respect and and communicate with regularly. So really try to get a broad-based outreach from stakeholder groups and the public. And uh, from a process perspective, I think that we we have done a pretty good job. Uh, and I'll say that I'm really happy with where we've ended up. The message has been pretty clear from all these groups that people like Reed Field the way it is. They seem to want to see um some uh gradual changes and improvements in our business and in our um downtown areas. They think affordable housing is important, particularly for seniors and working people. And they believe that um recreation and open space do have a lot of uh value in the town of Reed Field. Uh, and so those type of messages, not universally held, of course, none of these are, um, seem to be that people want to keep Reed Field kind of generally as it is, not do anything drastic. Um, there are no plans to um to change anything dramatically, and even if there were, the comprehensive plan isn't a document that is intended to uh be an end uh to be an end. We still have the need for public engagement, policy development, uh, select board involvement, public voting, uh, budgeting. Nothing in the comp plan can become a reality without a lot of discussion and at least one or two votes. So um, I know there's been some some statements put out there that that um uh this somehow uh dictates uh or mandates uh things. Uh, it certainly doesn't. It starts the discussion. So um, I I just want to say that I'm really proud and and grateful for the work done by the comprehensive plan committee over the past uh really two, two-plus years. Uh, and I'll just summarize our metrics for what we did in that time. We had twenty-two uh comprehensive plan meetings, uh, and we we have one more scheduled. We had six uh public outreach uh sessions conducted out of six. We had four uh public uh hearings. We're going to have two more by the time this is done uh and the time people vote on it. Um, we collected a hundred and sixty-nine long form and sixty-seven short form surveys, as well as eight business surveys. That represents over twelve percent uh of our adult voting population, which is very impressive in in my view. Uh, considering that it's completely voluntary. Uh, we had um uh nine hundred and thirty-nine household mailings. We didn't catch everybody. Um, we're still trying to figure out what how the post office uh works with that, with that particular kind of mailing, but um, we made a pretty good dent in it. Uh, and then we had uh six uh administrative actions completed and two more. Um, and the the final administrative action on this is town meeting vote. Uh, so I just want to encourage folks to take a look at the town website. If you have questions, reach out to me, reach out to anybody on the comprehensive plan committee, uh, ask the questions. And uh, I I hope that people look at voting on this, not as though, uh, you know, if there's something that you disagree with, that you vote against the whole thing, but that you look at it holistically and say, does this seem like a good vision for our community that was developed, uh, at least um with with um um a fair amount of public participation and engagement. Uh, and I I think that we 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 got that, and I think that we have a very good product that improves on the two thousand nine plan, uh, which was the last time this was updated. Originally, the plan was put together uh in the nineties, late nineties, uh, and then updated in two thousand nine, and then here we are with our second update to this. Um, and so I'll I'll leave it there, Dennis, and just say that I want to thank again everybody that's been involved and everybody that will take the time to look at this document and and consider what it means for the community and what kind of vision it puts forward.
Outstanding. Catherine, you want to go?
So I have a question for you, Eric. Um, I I read a editorial comment in the uh old Kennebec Journal, the Central Maine newspapers, that said we haven't updated our plan in almost a quarter of a century. But you just stated that this last plan was from two thousand nine. Is that correct?
That's correct. So that that was uh not accurate information, unfortunately, but we're going to work hard to make sure we get good information out there.
Okay. And I think I read that it's a twelve-year renewal cycle and we did actually start this in twenty nineteen or eighteen, but got COVID got in the way, as it did with many things.
Absolutely.
So even date to date, um, two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-three is only fourteen years. I just think it's important for us to try and give the factual information. So thank you.
Uh, I I would like for my part just to say that that I have been on this committee since the beginning. I've I've gone through notes from uh, you know, a lot of meetings and, you know, there was, there was a a lot of concern around this committee and getting this uh plan together. And I just want to say that the people who have worked on this, the committee members, everyone who has been a part of it, have it really come together and united. I I was, I was concerned um at one point about the the future of the the committee, just because there was some turnover. There was a little bit of of just just a little tumult uh that I felt like could have really done it, the the process in. But I just want to say thank you to all of the members for uh not allowing that to happen. Um, and and I really, I I have a lot of faith in this and and love it as a guiding document. Anyone else?
Um, so I have a comment which I um asked Eric about in writing. So I actually read through with comp plan on Saturday morning.
Like one does.
Does. I spent like two hours and I only got through about half. I started taking notes during it because I'm like, okay, I want to remember this on page thirty and this on page forty-one, and then I'm like, I can't do this. Um, so anyway, so as uh, just to let you guys know, there's a lot of really cool stuff in there in terms of reading it, but it is a long read. Um, I know somebody had said something in a previous meeting about us. We'll read these first like thirty pages or something. And then I I'm like, well, I didn't see that that really covered it. Um, but if you do have questions as you're reading through it, take some notes. Um, send them in an email to the town manager and he will get them to the right people. Um, I found little stupid things like spelling errors or something was named wrong. Or I had a question on a percentage and
Yeah.
You know, little things.
Are you surprised by that, Sean?
And that's exactly, exactly right. There's nothing wrong with that. Love it.
Just for Greg Durgan's benefit.
Yes, yes.
Um, because he always picked on us about not reading things. Um, but it's it's still a draft plan, so it, there's nothing picking on here, but um
Yeah.
But it is really interesting and it it's thought provoking when you read some of these things and and trying to realize that I'm one person out of twenty-six hundred approximately in town and um, everything can't go my way. Uh, but is the way that is the flavor of the whole document something we can live with? I think that's what we're looking for. And if there's something in there that just seems really wrong, then you need to point that out to people. And then we also need to remember, as we told folks at the last public meeting about the budget and we mentioned the comp plan at the end and the land use ordinance revisions. It's a guiding document. It's meant to lead us. It's meant for us to fall back on to justify why we're making certain choices as we move forward. It is not an ordinance. It is not something set in stone. We use it as a basis. Um, and so if there's, if there's something someone finds that's really just seems anti-everything we stand for, then that needs to be pointed out now before we finish this off.
Yeah. Yeah, it's it's uh been a good process so far. Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Sean. I also wanted to thank the the folks on there, you know, I was I was fortunate enough to be a part of it in the beginning until I be- came on to the select board and it, it was, there's a lot in there. Even I remember in the beginning trying to set up who was going to do what. Just listening to, you want us to do what? You want us to research what? How much detail? Oh, there's a lot of detail. Okay, great. Um, I just, I can really appreciate what has done in the final document and um, I think, you know, we, what I what I did for myself was I kind of looked at the snippets of the information that people have talked about in town, you know, I've been I think, you know, we, what I, what I did for myself was I kind of looked at the snippets of the information that people have talked about in town, you know, I've been because it's a, it's an accessible document. Thank you very much, Eric. So you are able to filter through it by search features. And so you can kind of just read the really things that might matter to you, whether it's senior living, whether it's community opportunities and such. So take an effort to try that too and provide any comments you can.
Absolutely. Wonderful. Good. Thank you for the update. This will be mentioned. We'll talk about this later tonight when we take a look at the warrant, which is a perfect segue. We have about an hour left of our meeting, and if we keep faithful to the agenda, we should be good to go here. Item, oh, yes, item twenty-three zero seventy-seven is to consider the final draft of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget and warrant. This is the final draft in your packet. And what I, what what we will do tonight, the way that we like to go through this is we will, basically, the select board will go through. And what we'll do is we will split these up. Some of these, we don't have any, they're they're required by law, others we will talk about and go through. But essentially, this will put our, this will put our stamp of approval on here for this warrant, the upcoming vote. So if I I just want to wait just a hot second while everyone gets a chance to take a look at the warrant or get there with us. What I'd like to do is I'm going to, I don't think we have any voting here at the beginning part, but Article one and two are essentially, Article one is to elect the moderator, which we have to do anyway. So that's not under debate. And then Article two are the elections for a select board, for the RSU thirty-eight school board, the local school board, local school committee, two of those, one for one year, one for two year, oh, and one for three year. So those are the elections, nothing that we have there. Articles three, four, five, and six are all administrative articles. They are part of the warrant because they allow us to spend the money. So they are procedural. If anyone has any questions about those, we can certainly talk about them, but otherwise, I would entertain a motion to accept the articles the way they are written.
This was which numbers?
Three, four, five, and six.
Don't we also have to do one and two?
One and two would be included there as well. Yeah, but those are kind of, yes, I'm sorry.
So I didn't connect the chain, didn't connect the future.
Between three and
Yes, exactly. I was an English maker.
If there are no questions about one and two, three, four, five, and six, seven, or three, four, five, and six are what we're voting on.
I'll make a motion to, to right. Except, except articles one, two, three, four, five, and six as presented in our packet for the warrant.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept articles one through six on the upcoming warrant. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Carol, you are in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Article seven begins our departments. And Article seven is for administration budget. Article eight is for the municipal maintenance budget. Article nine is for the community services budget. And Article ten is for the wrecks, parks, and activities budget. So again, we're looking at seven, eight, nine, and ten. These are, again, departments and funding their operations.
No, I have a question. Eric, have any of the numbers changed since we saw them last on these?
No, not on these numbers.
Then I would make a motion for us to approve.
Accept.
Ah, let's see. To approve articles, to accept articles seven, eight, nine, and ten with a select board recommendation of yes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve articles seven, eight, nine, and ten with a select board recommends. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Carol.
Um, so on number seven, the grants, planning, and services. On that number started at two thousand. And then I thought in the last meeting, it said we increased it to eight thousand, and now I'm seeing ten thousand. So that just kind of keeps
exploding. We increased it by eight thousand.
Yes, I believe it was an, it, there was two thousand there, and it was an eight thousand dollar increase to bring it to ten thousand.
And Eric, didn't you state that we spent over that last year?
We did, and this year.
Okay.
So this is not, this won't even cover it. We have
We do have the budget in here, right?
We do.
Yes.
And so can we just point out where that is for Carol?
That's fine. If it was an increase from the previous one, I thought that was the total amount going from two thousand to eight thousand.
Understood.
And I know the discussion has been about spending money to make money, or, you know, or to allow us to take advantage of some grants.
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Carol. Good question. Any further discussion on seven, eight, nine, and ten? All right, all in favor? Good. And Carol, you are in the affirmative. Thank you very much. We take a pause for Article eleven, which is something I'm going to get to. Article eleven is very important, so I want to make sure that I say this clearly and succinctly for everyone who's listening and for future reference. Article eleven says, shall the town vote to pursue the development of an expanded multi-use recreational field area at the fairgrounds property, consistent with the town's fairground management plan, with any final project plans coming before the voters for approval, and with the project construction to be funded exclusively by federal, state, and private grant sources and donations, which the town is hereby authorized to apply for, accept, and expend? This article, Article eleven, is the first step in creating the recreational field area at the fairgrounds. And what it does is it allows us to understand that this is a direction that the town would like to move forward. And that is kind of what that article is for. There will be, if the town approves this, then that gives us, this opens the first gateway to start to talk about grants and funding, and there will be an additional vote in November with a more detailed plan. So that's what Article eleven is. It's the first gateway. It's the first level up, if you will. But that's my assessment. Steve, is there anything else that you would like to say about this as a process leader?
What's what's important to understand is that the we met as a committee with the landscape architect last week, and she'll be coming back. We'll be meeting again yeah, Thursday of this week, looking at revised plans. And the plan that was reached in consensus of all the committees that were there is one that does not include a basketball or pickleball court, does not include concession stand or anything. It's it's basically a softball field. Some expanded handicap access for porta-potties. And looking at optimizing the parking in some way or shape or form. They haven't quite figured that out yet. But also including reserving some space for non-development and some space for possible future development and a pollinator garden as well. So all those things, we're still working it out. You know, the the revised design we're going to look at this week, but we will also have a public hearing in May before the vote, where people can, and we'll make sure we get this information all completely on the website also, but we'll also have a public hearing before the vote.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask? I'm sorry.
Hang on one second. Yeah, that's okay.
Is that a separate public hearing that'll be just for that?
Just for that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Carol. Now you're you're free.
Just to clarify what Steve said, so softball field is the primary focus. No basketball court?
Correct, Carol.
But a pollinator garden is still in there?
That's just an open space. There's no work to really do. It's just like, it's the idea is to maybe put a couple of those trails through there with some explanation so people can understand what they're looking at, you know? It's not a, we're not doing any development. It's just going to be in that little spot kind of behind where the, there's a big loam pile right now off by the side of the parking lot.
Is that part of the future plans piece? Because I think I heard you say that there's going to be a a spot set aside that will stay open and and then another hot spot for possible future development. And that's where we could be talking about a concession stand or a basketball court in the future.
No, no. I
Well, that's different. Yeah.
I I don't think I don't think the conversation is even there. So I don't, I I don't want us to put out there that that's where the conversation is, that there may or may not be something else. The conversation as as of now is all the committees in town that have a viable care or oversight in some form of that space are in consensus about a current plan that includes the things Steve mentioned.
So what would future development mean?
With that's a good question.
Okay, so you haven't decided.
We have not decided that.
Okay, but that's something you're still working on.
But I I don't think that's something we will say what possible future development will be before we build the softball field. I mean, that's, that's a, if that happens, that's a down the line decision, but we want to make sure that there is space if there is something that, you know, in the future, we can agree on to to for other development, you know, like, do we want to put a basketball court there? Do we want to put one at the at the Reed Field Beach? Do we want to, you know? It's still out there, but we definitely have not said that that's, we're going to do this some way down the line.
Yeah, correct.
And Carol, you wanted to say
You want to go further, Carol?
I do. Um, so is there a prioritization of all of these future plans? Like, okay, so let's say the softball field has funding. And it seems like handicap accessibility would be something the town should be pushing for. Increased parking should be a town. You know, that is important because there's unsafe parking up Church Road when it gets to be congested in that area. So I think that's a safety factor. A pollinator garden, I mean, this whole thing was about the kids and giving kids a safe place to play and hang out and families to gather. I just, I really have always had trouble comprehending a pollinator garden where in an area where bikes and balls, bikes are going to be ridden, balls are going to be thrown, kids are going to be doing somersaults, whatever. I just, there's so many. Talk about open space. There's so many other areas in this town where people can enjoy a pollinator garden. I don't know that a lot of people are going to go to the fairgrounds for that. So I'm not sure where that funding is going to come from. If it's from a grant that takes away from the kids, I would be very opposed to that. If it comes from private donations, because people in town want a pollinator garden in that spot, I understand that. But I don't think those two go together with a spot that the town has a lot of backing for a safe place for the kids to be. So that's, that's just my thing is how do we figure out when there's a grant which part of the project it's going to be funding and which ones are totally private donations driven?
This is Sean. I think what 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 is fortunate for us is that the the groups that are working together have a big component of conservation, recreation. And one of the primary grants we're going for is the land use conservation recreation fund. So I think our plans and the way that in which the movement where they're the direction we're moving in is going to put us in a in a great spot to maximize the potential of those grants because we are looking at it from both directions.
So the field is is the focus. There's a, there's a understanding that some of those areas will remain undeveloped. There's still a a a conversation about development. I don't want to get too far into the weeds with this because we're just talking about the articles, but the meeting is happening this Thursday, right?
Not the public meeting.
Not the public meeting. No, okay.
Meeting again with the landscape architect. She's come back with a revision of the plan.
Okay, so the revision of the plan. So then that way we'll get a kind of kind of better idea of what may be down the line. Yeah.
So question, if the voters vote this in, is this the final say to say, okay, we go ahead with this, and then a committee decides what is the emphasis and what is the use of grants and private donations? Or do the people continue to have a say of what's important to them in that space?
November.
Carol, what's what's what we're doing with this article is we will have a plan before the article is voted on in in June, we'll have a public hearing for people to come and look at the the plan we developed. And yes, that's developed by this committee, which has represented is of all the town boards or committees on it. All right, so we will people get a chance to look at that. They will vote in June whether or not they want to pursue that. But any thought in the article, it says, any final project plans come before the voters for approval in November, right? And so there's going to be an ongoing process. It's not a top secret committee, you know, cooking up something where, oh, here it is, folks, take it or leave it, you know? But it it will come up for a vote again in November. This is just looking to, it's a way to, by having this article there, we can start to pursue grants.
Okay, so when is the public meeting on? Is this the public meeting on the warrants and the budget and the RSU and everything? Is that all in the same night?
There's a separate public hearing that we're planning in May. I don't think we've actually set the date for it yet. Yeah, we haven't set the day. I think we're going to set that this Thursday, Carol. Want to make sure we're ready.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we've been working hard with the landscape architect. So we'll set the date, and that is just for the fairgrounds project, that hearing.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Catherine.
We would never have a public hearing in the town office for the RSU budget because it's an RSU public budget meeting where they talk about that. So our budget, our our next public hearing on the budget is just on the town side of the budget, which does include the Kennebec County assessment. But it doesn't include anything about the schools.
Yeah, good.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Article eleven as presented with a yes from the select board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article eleven with a yes from the select board. All in favor? Good. And Carol is in the affirmative. Thank you. Now, I I mentioned this earlier, but I now see the reasoning. It does seem sort of strange. We're in the departments, right? Article ten, Parks and Recreation. But Article eleven is included there because it is related to recreation, fairgrounds, field area. So that's why it's included. You'll notice that Article twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are, again, departments and basically what I would call safety and roads and things like that. Article twelve is Protection Department. Article thirteen is the cemetery materials and services, and Article fourteen is for roads and drainage, and that includes summer maintenance and winter maintenance. Does anyone have any questions about those?
Eric, have those numbers changed since we last saw them?
No, those have not. I'll just say that the numbers that changed, we did have a change in revenue for and a lot of this comes down to the to the fire truck and the fact that we did look at finding ways to utilize less borrowing. And so when we get to those articles, I'll point out those. But really, the only areas that had changed significantly in any way were the ones related to the fire truck.
Yeah, and we have those addendums in our, in the packet on the base.
Oh, I just want to make it clear for the public that we are on top of this.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for the select board to accept Articles twelve, thirteen, and fourteen recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve with a yes recommendation, Articles twelve, thirteen, and fourteen in the warrant. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Very well. Carol, in the affirmative. Thank you very much, Carol. Now, we get to what I call the fire truck articles. Article fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen are going to be this, and there is a reason, though this be madness, yet there is method in it. Articles fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen all work together. Eric, you're much smarter than me. Would you like to explain this?
Well, first I disagree with that statement.
Okay, yeah.
But but I will say that Article fifteen, the the sequence here is revenue, revenue, expense.
Revenue, revenue.
To to show all those things together because they they need to be looked at together, and I hope that residents will consider them together. Article fifteen is Uh, that residents will consider them together. Um, Article fifteen is the borrowing that starts off and says, hey, guys, we're looking at buying a fire truck. We need to borrow some money to make that happen. This is what we're looking at as far as the amount of money. The cost of borrowing that money and the total fiscal impact. So those three things are taken care of in Article fifteen. Article sixteen shows where the rest of the money is going to come from, uh, and it includes. Uh, a little bit of um uh reserve use of seventy five thousand and also two hundred thousand. Uh, in use of designated funds that we had talked about um re- appropriating from a reserve that was originally for the. The fire station sprinkler system to the use for this fire truck because um we've got money that we borrowed at one point nine percent. Uh, that's sitting there that we have had trouble expanding because of the current construction climate. And it makes sense to apply that uh to save around fifty thousand dollars in interest payments. Uh, plus lowering the um the overall impact um on taxpayers at least initially. Um, until we look again uh in the future at what that um uh sprinkler system might might include. But uh those three things together, uh and then the expense line is under the capital. Um, uh, discussion with other capital items. And that expense lines where you see that's full six hundred and I think twenty three thousand cost of the fire truck. So revenue, revenue, expense.
And so just to just to clarify for me, so that that six hundred and twenty three thousand dollars and and change. Number for the total. For the fire truck, that is reduced in terms of the amount that's going to be bonded. And we're going to borrow by the two hundred thousand dollars and the two seventy five thousand dollars in Article sixteen, right? Okay.
And they should all add up.
It does, yeah.
Good, good.
Okay, so I have a. Comment and a suggestion. Um, so my first comment is you sent us supplemental information that came from Bond Council, which has. Changes to Articles fifteen and sixteen mentioned. Um.
Yes.
So when we go to approve them, um, I'd like to read those into the record so that we're sure that we get this correct.
Yep.
Um, and then I have a suggestion um to put out to the board. Um, we've had multiple discussions about how we're going to do the capital improvements line. Should it all be together or not together? And in what way not together? Uh, and we had discussed then and set up at our last meeting, a joint meeting with the Budget Committee to come up with a. Um. A policy, if you will, on how to do this instead of just making a rash decision on. Well, we'll take this because of that reason. We'll take this one because of that reason. Um, so I'd like, I think. That it would be really wise for us to pull out the fire department part of the capital improvements and make it its own. Article, because it's for a bonded question. And I think it goes together with fifteen and sixteen, and then that way. It's not tied up if people don't approve Article seventeen. It could be for any of those things that are there, not just for the fire truck. And since we're asking people to bond the fire truck, I think it's neater. Um, and clearer if we put made a article in between sixteen and seventeen, so probably a new seventeen and then reorder everything going down by one. Um, so that we would have a a. I don't know what you would call it, a capital improvement fire truck.
Warrant.
Warrant article.
Yeah, I do like, I I see what you're saying. So so just so we understand. Um, what we are trying to do with these articles is we've already borrowed money for the fire department fire station, which is at a lower rate. If we use that money um and bond less money and borrow now, we would actually save money in the long run. And what we would also do is break out the six hundred and twenty three thousand and fifty seven dollars of the fire department from Article seventeen. Which is essentially the fire truck and make it its own article since it is a bonded item. Does everyone understand? We we're pretty clear on that? I would, I would, I would support that. I think that's a good idea, especially when there were some questions about how. Um, you know, those things are put together and if we do the bond, I think it makes it special. It it's sort of, it's a different situation.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please, yes, ma'am.
Different one. Um, I would like to take these articles one by one.
Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen?
Yep.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, so fifteen um is uh basically talking about how much we will have to. Uh, uh, borrow. It allows us to borrow Article fifteen, and you can see the number three forty eight fifty seven. Um, is there any discussion about number fifteen?
Yes, we need to use the wording that was sent from Bond Council.
Gotcha.
Which after the words fire tanker, pumper, tanker, fire truck. There's an and inserted before the parenthetical be. And then after principal payment dates, it says we need to add in and the redemption with or without premium.
Sounds like a housekeeping item.
Right, so it's after the comma that follows dates and that that is from legal counsel to make it um. Correct.
Yeah.
So I would make a motion to approve, to accept Article fifteen. There is no recommendation. Yes, there is with the. Wow, I'll make a motion to accept Article fifteen with the wording from Bond Council. Email of Friday, April seventh with Select Board recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to uh approve uh Article fifteen uh with the additional language that was added. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor. Very well, and Carol, you vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Article fifteen will be offered as is. Article sixteen asks, shall the town vote to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars from the fire department building reserve? Oh. Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Borrowed to pay for capital improvements to the fire station as approved by vote of the June eighth, twenty twenty one annual town meeting. And then the rest reads the same, and seventy five thousand dollars from the fire department capital reserve to be used to offset the cost of a new pumper. Tanker fire truck subject to passage of Articles fifteen and seventeen.
So Article sixteen is basically saying, can we use money that we already have set aside? To help offload and not borrow as much. It just needs to be crystal clear for those of you keeping score at home. Um, again, Article sixteen um is the um using the money already appropriated. Is there any discussion about this?
I'll make a motion to to accept Article sixteen as written in the supplemental email from Legal Counsel of Friday, April seventh. With Select Board recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article sixteen uh with the language, uh, new language uh addendum. Uh, that was included. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Very well, thank you very much. Now we move to Article seventeen, which says, shall the town vote to array uh raise and appropriate one million? One hundred ninety seven thousand, two hundred and eighty two dollars for the capital improvement budgets category for the following budget lines. Um, Fire Department, Guile Hall, Library Building, Open Space Cemetery, Sidewalk, Roads, Equipment. Equipment leases and transfer station. Um. It's been uh mentioned about separating the uh fire department uh portion of this. Um. How would you like to proceed?
Make a motion to have a new. Article seventeen that says, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate six hundred twenty three thousand, fifty seven dollars? For the fire.
Pumper tanker fire truck.
Pumper tanker fire truck.
For the pumper tanker fire truck. With a select board recommendation of yes.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded uh to uh separate the fire department line. Uh, into a new article with a select board rep- uh recommending yes. Um, is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor. Thank you very much. Carol, you vote in the affirmative. Uh, so therefore, uh, now we know that six hundred and twenty three thousand dollars will be removed. Uh, from that uh line um and um will be changed in our warrant. Eric, go ahead.
I'm I'm just going to request for simplicity's sake that um you just reference the existing article numbers as you move forward. Uh, and and we will note that um and we'll adjust them later. So just use the please, uh, yeah. Not that, not the the old number.
Yeah.
So so that's my just my one request before you proceed.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Um, very well, so now we are looking at Article seventeen minus the fire department uh line.
Which makes it five hundred seventy four thousand, two hundred twenty five dollars.
Very nice. Again, five seventy four, two twenty five. Thank you, Catherine.
So I'd make a motion. For us to ex- for the select board recommends yes and accept Article seventeen. Uh, for five hundred seventy four thousand, two hundred twenty five for capital improvements budget category for the remaining lines.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article seventeen uh in the amount of uh five seventy four, two twenty five, uh, which is the capital improvements. Uh, is there any further discussion?
I would like to reiterate another request to separate out open space fifty thousand dollars. I believe it's not a capital improvement. It's more of a donation. Um, and it doesn't belong in that. It should be. By itself like the rest of the donations that are on this warrant.
It is noted. Go ahead, Catherine.
Um, I looked up earlier this evening when we were discussing and the Reed Field Open Space Plan was approved in June of two thousand and six. Um, so it's been in existence for fourteen, seventeen years now. Um, with clear definitions of what open space is, how it can be funded. It references the comprehensive plan. Um. So I think it's something that has been supported and and open and um. I I understand where you're coming from, Carol, and I I think it's. It's really too late to be doing it for this year and we're doing the best we can to address that. Um, by meeting in June with the Budget Committee. Um, I'm also going to suggest that we ask the auditors to attend that meeting. Um, if that would be okay with everybody so that we can get the. Um, proper perspective for how town governments are run and what is. Usual and customary procedures um and that we could maybe then be making decisions that are informed before we set a new policy. Yeah. Um, and you know, it might make come out that we separate out everything in the future or. Certain things or certain dollar values. I don't know what the criteria is, but it seems to me that that's a reasonable measured approach to this.
Yeah. Um, just to reiterate. Go ahead, go ahead, Carol. I'm sorry.
Sorry, my only controversy with this was the dollar amount that was. Quite. Um, largely increased, so. And and Eric, I thought it was twenty five thousand, then doubled to fifty thousand every year, but then as I look back to some of my old. Budget talks and going back in history, but on different budget lines. I thought I saw it was ten thousand going to fifty thousand. Can you clarify through the last, I think, the four year look back? What dollar amounts were associated with open space? That's where I have a problem with it is it was. Greatly um increased with. No vote, no discussion, just kind of done in a budget committee um meeting with. Where nobody that is um elected by the public was present.
Yeah, go uh.
That that just isn't true. We voted on that last year in public. Um, the select board did. With us.
It was on the warrant like it is now. So I you guys say that repeatedly, but can I ask Eric what the dollar amount went from? Four years ago to present. That's what I have a problem with.
Sure, yeah. So um, uh, there there was no expenditure in this line uh four years ago. Uh, three years ago, we had a ten thousand dollar line. Uh, and I guess really um. Uh, uh, so I'll just, yeah, so it went from ten thousand. To fifty thousand. It was fifty thousand last year. There's there's no change in that amount this year. It's the same as it was last year. So we went from ten to fifty to and then on to fifty again with this budget year. Um, and and I do want to point out, Carol, I I don't think we've talked about this much, but I I don't think the intent is to continue on with fifty thousand dollars of savings. Uh, every year in perpetuity. I don't believe that's the intent uh of this um. Line. I think that the idea was that there would be a a small reserve established as a buffer. Uh, and and a way to take advantage of opportunities that might come up. I think part of that discussion that you're going to have in June is going to be important around setting maybe what some of these parameters are. Um, and I will say that with our adjustments that we're making to the whole accounting structure. That every, I think every single reserve we have should have a target reserve amount. Um, and I I will just say that uh the last piece on this, because we've talked about it a number of times. Is that I I don't think I don't think a hundred thousand dollars is necessarily enough uh or a hundred and ten. Um, to make a big difference on purchasing a piece of property when you can't buy much in town um uh for for less than, you know, five or ten thousand an acre. Uh, but it could make a difference in working in partnership with somebody else. And I think that it it, once we have a plan going forward, once we're able to update our open space plan uh and and set some of these thresholds. We should be able to have a a reasonable baseline for this, but I I just don't want people to think that that we're going to be um, you know, putting five hundred thousand dollars away. Um, I I just don't, I just don't think that's a direction that that people are are heading in.
I I don't personally think a lot of people want the town speculating in real estate. I don't think. Our job as a town government is to take care of its citizens and take care of the roads. I don't, I can't look. A hardworking um Reed Field resident in the eye and say, we're going to take fifty thousand dollars of your hard earned um. Money, tax money, and speculate on real estate. I just don't think. People. Want their money to be spent on that. If they do. Then fine, write a check and make a donation or put it on its own line and let people decide, but I don't think. Money should be set aside to speculate. For open space. We have. Twelve percent of Reed Field is already open space for either education, recreation, or set aside by conservation. Twelve percent of our, I think it's nineteen thousand acres. And that's, that's a lot. That's a lot. We have. Had very generous donors that have donated their property. I don't think we use our municipal tax dollars. To set aside property for who knows what use.
Thank you, Carol. We 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 hear you. We. We have a motion on the floor to approve seventeen as it stands. Um, we've had our discussion. If there's anything further. Otherwise, we will vote to uh approve Article seventeen as it stands. All in favor? Good. All opposed? Good, and Carol Berlin-Boss uh is opposed to Article seventeen. We move on to Article eight.
Dennis, I'm sorry. So how does that read on the warrant? If all but one, does it say um Select Board recommends or does it say?
Yes. Majority wins. So the majority wins there. Yeah. Um, Article eighteen begins what uh is the, okay, so the two budgets um which we have, we have solid waste. Regional assessments and the Kent- uh Kennebec County tax um are these three that we uh have together. Article eighteen is for the solid waste uh budget category. Uh, Article nineteen is for regional assessments, which is for Cobbsy Watershed and First Park, which we are obligated to give. Uh, and Article twenty is for the Kennebec County tax uh which um we understand comes from the county. Uh, are there any uh questions or concerns about eighteen, nineteen, or twenty?
I'll make a motion to accept Articles eighteen, nineteen, and twenty as presented with Select Board recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Articles nineteen, twenty, and, excuse me, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Uh, as they are appear in the warrant. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Good, thank you. And Carol is in the affirmative. Thank you, Carol. Uh, we now look at item twenty one. Article twenty one is for the town to raise and appropriate for the debt service that we already owe. Uh, this is for the fire truck bond, uh, the Miranda Cook Lake Dam Bond, the twenty twenty building bond, and the twenty twenty one building and paving bond. Basically, this article will allow us to pay our debts. Uh, is there any question about Article twenty one?
I'll make a motion to approve Article twenty one as written with the Select Board recommending yes.
Second.
Uh, it has been uh moved and seconded to approve. Uh, it has been, uh, moved and seconded to approve Article twenty-one as it appears, all in favor? And, uh, Carol in the affirmative, thank you very much. Um, we're starting to get to what I would call, um, basically request, funding requests. Um, and so it looks like Article twenty-two, uh, is for, uh, ten thousand dollars for a local tax relief program. Um, which we have done before. Uh, Article twenty-three is for Kennebec Behavioral Health. Article twenty-four is for the Central Maine Agent Agency on Aging, the Cohen Center and Senior Spectrum. Article twenty-five is a funding request for the Family Violence Agency. Article twenty-six is for the Torsey Pond Association. Article twenty-seven is for the Sexual Assault, uh, and Crisis, uh, Agency.
And twenty-eight.
And twenty-eight is for the Thirty Mile River Association. Yep, twenty-nine, I know we're going to go from all, twenty-nine is for the Reed Field Union Meeting House. Thirty is for the Miranda Cook Food Bank, thirty-one is for the Miranda Cook Lake Association. And thirty-two is for the Reed Field Blizzard Busters Snow Club, snowmobile club.
So can I just ask a question about the, is there any, um, change in these from last year, in any of these numbers?
Yes, uh, there's a couple. So the first one that's most notable is that the, uh, food bank, the food bank donation is new.
Food bank is new, we, that was a petition, yeah.
We did also get a request from one of the watershed associations, um, to increase their, uh, funding level. And I think it was.
It was, Torsey came out separate from Thirty Mile.
Yeah, and so Thirty Mile asked for, Thirty Mile asked for an increase there, uh, Torsey's effectively the same, so, um. That, that's the other change is that, um, Thirty Mile increased by, I think it was like seven percent, it wasn't, um. Dollar-wise, it wasn't a large amount, but it was a, a percentage that exceeded the, um, the, the threshold, and so they did, um. Uh, request, um, that by petition. Uh, and so the increases that we are seeing, uh, the, the new one and the other were, went, uh, did go through the petition process.
So it's a total of like about eleven, twelve hundred dollars?
Roughly.
Roughly, okay.
Yep.
Did, did the Union Meeting House go up or am I?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Um, just to get, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to accept Articles twenty-two through thirty-two. As presented with the select board recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve twenty, Articles twenty-two through thirty-two, uh, there's a lot there. So, uh, if there's any discussion now, uh, go for it. Very well, um, all in favor? Thank you, and Carol voting in the affirmative, thank you very much. Uh, we now get to Article thirty-three, um, these are what we get into what are called unclassified budget categories. The Reed Field Enterprise Fund, um, the Reevaluation Fund, Overdraft Protection and Abatements. These again are just budgeted numbers, uh, Article thirty-three, just make sure that that sixty thousand dollars is either, even though it's unclassified. It still has a purpose. Um, I'd take this one separately.
I'll make a motion to approve Articles. It's not approve, it's.
Except.
Except Article thirty-three as presented with the select board recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article, uh, to accept Article thirty-three, uh, in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for the unclassified budget category. Um, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
I have.
Oh, 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 sorry, sorry, go ahead, yes, 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 I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, so the real estate property revaluation, the twenty-five thousand in, maybe a couple meetings ago, there was a. A synopsis of the reevaluation work, and I remember a line saying. The funds for this has already been set aside, there are no additional funds needed for this. But then here it is, real estate property revaluation twenty-five thousand. Can you clarify that for me, Eric? Is this for the next round of revaluations, or am I remembering something incorrect?
Well, you, you're close, um, the, um, uh, the twenty-five thousand that you see here, this is an expense line. So this is where we authorize the expenditure of that twenty-five thousand dollars. Which is the first year of the four-year plan that's going to cost us a hundred thousand for the full revaluation. Later on, we have the revenue line, and that includes the offsetting revenue used from the reserve. That, that, um, that, that covers the expense.
Okay.
And we're getting, we're getting to that in just, that's coming up here in just a moment, um. Anything else with that? We still need to vote, all in favor? Thank you very much, and Carol is in the affirmative. Uh, before we get to expenditures of revenues, uh, Article thirty-four. It's how the town vote to raise and appropriate five thousand for the general assistance. Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, we have to do this by state statute, yes?
Uh, well, if, if we want, um, we also have offsetting revenue here.
Yeah.
Um, we are obligated to provide general assistance services, the amount, uh, is typically based on experience.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, yes, uh, this is an obligated line, the amount, uh, is certainly up to the towns.
Okay.
Um, and we budget the full amount here that we would expend, and then we have fifty percent offsetting revenue showing up later.
Excellent, okay, all right.
Yep.
Make a motion to accept Article thirty-four with, as presented with a select board recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Article thirty-four for file, uh, general assistance, um, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much, and Carol is in the affirmative. All right, we get now to the expenditure of revenues, uh, portion of our warrant. Um, and it is Article tw- thirty-five, uh, which authorizes us to do it. And Article thirty-six, which tells us how much we are going to do. Um, are there any questions about Article thirty-five and thirty-six? All right.
I make her, I, I, I just want to clarify that Article thirty-five authorizes us to spend extra money that we receive. From the federal, state, and private grant sources. Um, and thirty-six is for specific revenues.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so I would make a motion to accept Articles thirty-five and thirty-six with the select board recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Article thirty-five and thirty-six, uh, the, uh, discussion begins now.
Eric, you did say before that there were some changes in revenue, and so now I'm at revenue and I didn't ask you ahead of time.
Yeah, sure, so the, um, uh, the grant, or excuse me, where, where is it here? The, um, grant revenues should be showing here. On proceeds, uh, so bond proceeds is three forty-eight, zero five seven, that, that matches up with what we had, um, authorized. The, the potentially authorized, that Article fifteen contemplates, um, that. So that, that is two hundred thousand dollars less than it was before. Uh, and then when we get later on, when we talk about designated funds, um, in Article thirty-seven, you'll see the two hundred thousand dollars for fire stations. So that, that kind of shifted down that two hundred thousand, um, but I wanted to, those are the two that I wanted to point out.
Okay, so they are correct now for what we approved already in Article fifteen.
And sixteen.
And sixteen, yes.
Right, yeah, okay, super.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, so we are, uh, voting on, uh, to approve, uh, to accept Articles thirty-five and thirty-six, all in favor? Very well, thank you, Carol in the affirmative. Uh, speaking of designated funds, we go now to Article thirty-seven, our last, uh, designated fund. Uh, article, um, you can see, uh, the information here, this is, um, uh. Helping to reduce the twenty-twenty-three tax commitment, four hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and three dollars total. Um, pretty self-explanatory, any questions about that? I would entertain a. Oh, go ahead, Carol.
The fire station addition, that two hundred thousand, is that the one that is referred to above? That we're rolling somewhere else, or is that something else?
Yes.
That's the one, yeah.
That is.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to accept Article thirty-seven as presented with a select board recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Article thirty-seven, uh, with a yes recommendation from the select board, any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much, and Carol in the affirmative. Article thirty-eight, we're almost, uh, wrapping up our warrant approval. Article thirty-eight shall the town vote to authorize the select board to expend up to twenty-five thousand from the undesignated fund balance. In the aggregate for one or more purposes as necessary to meet contingencies that may occur during the ensuing fiscal year. This is basically a safety net, Eric, would you say?
Yeah, this, this gives some discretion to the board to, um, uh, deal with unplanned, um, uh, but perhaps important necessities. Uh, we've used this money this year for things like, um, helping to further the, um, franchise renewal. With Spectrum Charter, uh, and for, um, uh, a, a few other small, small items. But, um, they do come up now and then, and it is good to have, um. A, a, a resource that doesn't affect the com- board and committee budgets, uh, other areas. Uh, and also if this is not, um, expended, it goes back into the fund and can be utilized in subsequent years for, uh, offsetting taxes.
Right, excellent, so just helping out, uh, that's the unassigned fund balance, uh, any further questions about thirty-eight? Uh, then I'm going to roll. Oh, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, please, this is why we're here, Carol.
The unassigned fund balances, is that come about because of the new accounting practices where you took? You know, funds from cemetery and library and all these other different funds were kind of rolled into undesigned, is that where this is coming from?
Uh, no, so we, we've actually had this, um, for longer than I've been here. Um, uh, and I think it may have happened around the time that, um, the, um, well, I guess I shouldn't say when it happened. Um, it was here before I was here, uh, it was, I think, a larger dollar value, it was fifty thousand dollars at one point. And then we reduced it probably three or four years ago down to twenty-five thousand, to try to be more, uh, more responsive. Uh, to the, the interests of, of, of the public that were expressing concerns about it. Uh, and so it's been twenty-five thousand dollars for, for at least three or four years.
But where does it come from? What's the pool?
Oh, so it's, it's just, it's just the tax, it's raised through taxes, it's a raised and appropriated.
And you said this?
The next article, Carol, is gonna, is gonna ask if we will take two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from that same fund balance. So this is the money, I, I'm not sure I'll get this right, this is the money that is kind of left over. From what we budgeted as expenses and revenue, so we've had more revenue come in and fewer expenses go out. So we have money that isn't accounted for. And we can't spend it because we didn't authorize any spending for it. Uh, but we took the revenue in, say, people registered more cars, um, than we thought. And so that's where the unassigned fund balance comes from, and we try not to keep too much of that. We keep two twelfths of the budget as our reserve, and that's so that we have a balance in our checkbook. As we have to pay expenses and taxes are coming in and other revenues.
So, so, thank you, Catherine, and I, I just want to correct that, I, I said raise, and that was a mistake, we're not raising this money. We are just appropriating, appropriating it from an existing reserve.
I just think the question's really vague, um. Necessary to meet contingencies that may occur, I, that's just really vague, I, um.
I think that's the point.
I know, but I just, I don't think that's. I don't know, the board's obviously a bit one-sided these days, so I, twenty-five thousand dollars saying you can do. I, okay, I'm, I'm kind of opposed to the vagueness of it, I guess.
Okay, I think that, I think the language of a contingency fund, uh, that's in the RSU budget too, for example. Right, stuff happens, you know, if a boiler, I remember once, uh, a boiler failed during the middle of the year. And the money to pay for that boiler repair, which is pretty necessary, came out of the contingency fund. So what that's doing is it's just saying, we have some money that is there in case something happens. And something can happen, and we don't want something to happen and not have the money there to take care of it.
Then maybe we should take out less, um, in Article thirty-nine, are, are we like draining our unassigned fund balance too much? To reduce the tax commitment, that, I think it's just wait, I mean, there are people that want open space. And they want, you know, pollinator gardens and, and twenty-five thousand dollars. Under a vague category is just not something I'm, I'm a fan of. I think if it goes to tax commitment, great, if it goes to a boiler, of course, but that's what undesigned funds should be used for. Um. And if we're reducing it too much that we have to worry about twenty-five thousand in some un, um. Unexplained expense, maybe we're taking too much out of the unassigned fund balance to take down the tax commitment. That's all I'm saying, it's just really hard to grasp what this is. Going towards.
Yeah, that's, I, I think you're confusing categories here. Um, you voted in the affirmative with us to fund different things like the franchise agreement process. Um, that came out of that twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we're not, we're still going to have, what, a million plus dollars in our unassigned, unassigned fund balance?
Yeah, so, so you, you're absolutely right with that policy, so the, 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 this doesn't, um, in our, in, in, in my view. And the, at least the, the select board, as far as I can tell so far, or the Budget Committee, we, we try to find a balance. This, um, is, is, um, isn't too much out of that reserve. Um, because we have a policy that tells us what too much is out of the reserve, um. But that's, I guess, I, I don't know what else to say, really.
I just, I just think the, the question is kind of irrelevant, and again, I am going to stick to my notation. That any expense over thirteen thousand is what I think the select board should be voting on all the time, I know we've talked about that in the past. Um, just go ahead and vote, it's fine, I'll, I'll vote my, my thoughts.
Great, we're looking at thirty-eight and thirty-nine, um, Article thirty-nine, um, shall the town vote to, uh, wait, were we voting? We, we'll be in the middle of a, no, we don't have a motion now.
I'll make a motion to accept Article thirty-eight. Um, in the, as presented with the select board recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Artic-, uh, to accept Article thirty-eight, um, uh, with the select board, yes, all in favor? Good, all opposed? And Doran-Boss is opposed, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to accept Article thirty-nine as presented with the select board recommending yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article thirty-nine, uh, with a select board, uh, yes, recommendation, or any further discussion? All in favor? Very good, all opposed, Carol Doran-Boss opposed.
No, she wasn't.
I think, right, Carol?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that, Carol.
If we still have, if we still have a million left in unassigned fund balance, this does not seem like an excessive amount.
Yeah, no, 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 so, so, excuse me, Article thirty-nine passed unanimously, uh, with all the people voting in the affirmative. Article forty, uh, is the land use ordinance, um, a copy of the land use ordinance will be attached to the warrant. So folks can see the difference and the changes, uh, is there any, uh, disc, oh, let's go through the ordinances. Article forty is the land use ordinance, Article forty-one is the town beach ordinance. Um, those two together, just ordinances that are updated, the, uh, land use ordinance is updated every year. The town beach ordinance is one that we've had the readings of and we've approved, is there any further discussion? Yes, Eric.
Just one quick comment that, um, that, uh, these, this is, you're, you're voting just on the language of the articles.
Yeah.
The language of the attachments will be approved when you approve the final warrant for posting sometime next month.
Okay, cool, thank you, um.
Make a motion to accept Articles forty, forty-one, and forty-two as, did, did you include forty-two?
I didn't, because I was just going to have the comprehensive plan be separate.
Forty and forty-one as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Articles forty and forty-one as presented, uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Good, and Carol is in the affirmative. The reason I want to bring forty-two to the last is because it is the final article. And it does ask for acceptance and, uh, approval, uh, and adoption of the twenty-twenty-three comprehensive plan. Uh, so Article forty-two, um, will be, uh, the comprehensive plan article, and it should be, um, pretty, uh, straightforward. A copy of the comprehensive plan will also be available, uh, it's, the draft is, is online as well. So just to make sure that that one sort of stood out a little bit more, uh, is there any, uh, discussion about the way the article is worded?
I'll make a motion to accept Article forty-two as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Article forty-two as written, um, any further, um.
My, my only thought is the final draft of this was just available, I think it was March twenty-ninth. I have not had time to look at it, so, um, I, I can't say I'm in favor of the comprehensive plan. I haven't looked at it yet, I don't think there's been adequate time in a final, uh, form. To give us time to look at it, I, I want to pour over every little bit of it before that public meeting, but that's my problem with this question. Is it's a little premature to say, yes, I'm in, in favor of the comprehensive plan.
We're not actually doing that here because we don't make a recommendation on this, this is just to say. Do we want to put this question on the ballot?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
It, does that clarify for you? It, it, that's the case with forty, forty-one, and forty-two, we're not recommending, there's no, we're just making sure the wording on the warrant. Okay?
I feel better.
So, all in, yeah, absolutely. So all in, yeah, absolutely. Um, it's been moved in second to approve Article. Did I just get crazy? Yes, it has been moved in second. Uh.
Yes.
Angelica says yes. Oh, yeah, so it's, I'm getting to the end. Uh, it, to accept Article forty-two as written. All in favor? Very well, and Carol is in the affirmative.
Something he wants to show.
Sean, go for it.
I would like to make a motion to extend the meeting by thirty minutes. I think we only need twenty-five, but I'm just throwing up thirty, because it's a nice even number.
Yep.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension by thirty minutes. Hopefully we won't need it all. All in favor? Thank you very much. That's you, Steve. Good. Oh, yeah, Carol is the affirmative as well. Um, so we move now to item twenty-three oh eighty-three, which is consider the approval of commercial hauler permits for the transfer station. Only think there's one in our packet. Um, if you can find it there on your page, uh, which I will tell you.
It's down there somewhere.
Page.
Forty-eight.
Boy.
Thank you.
Forty-eight. There we go. Hallelujah. Uh, this is for, uh, James Diamond.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer station, commercial haulers, annual permit application for James Diamond as presented in the packet.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the, uh, commercial hauler permit for James Diamond, as it appears in the packet. Is there any further discussion? I will say this, even when we do this, we are supporting, uh, the business of Mr. Diamond. Um, and so things like this, little renewals, I just love the fact that we're able to do this. Uh, it gets our approval. We appreciate this, and we like to support small businesses in Reedfield. All in favor? Very good. And Carol in the affirmative. Very good. Our next item is to consider, uh, a policy document for the ad hoc connectivity committee. Uh, item twenty-three zero ninety-four. Eric?
Thanks, Dennis. Uh, so, uh, in the past, the select board has, uh, put together committees that are for a limited period of time with a limited scope, not a standing committee. Ad hoc is just that distinction, um, that it, this is not intended, at least this point, to be a standing committee. Um, we had started off a couple of years ago with a broadband committee, uh, that was, uh, effectively, um, uh, accomplished its mission. It did its work very well and thoroughly. We brought, uh, broadband to town meeting, um, and folks decided they didn't want to pay for it, and that's fine, but we learned a lot along the way as we went through that process and, and, um, looked at how to improve, um, the lives of residents and business owners in Reedfield. Uh, particularly, uh, folks with small, small home-based businesses that rely a lot on, on this type of, uh, service. Um, and so we found that it wasn't just about, um, you know, broadband internet or fiber internet. There was a lot to it. Uh, and a lot of, uh, issues around connectivity, including the affordability of, of service, on the fact that, um, we don't get a lot of information from um, uh, current providers, uh, promoting, uh, low-income options that do exist and are out there. Businesses don't often have very good options. Either they have to lie and say they're a residential, uh, service, even though they're a business, or they pay, uh, quite higher, uh, rates for level of service. Um, and the, the competition is a good thing, but we don't have much of that. Uh, and so, um, I think that there were a number of things that came forward. I bolded a few of those. Um, the committee, the broadband committee, um, helped inform some of this. Um, we, we see that, you know, the idea of Wi-Fi and other, um, uh, uh, you know, satellite and, um, uh, cellular-based technologies are out there. Uh, and the idea came about that we can work with our existing service providers to improve coverage. And that's okay, but that's not going to help in other areas, uh, especially helping older residents get connected, stay connected, uh, and afford being connected. And so the idea of this connectivity committee, uh, really grows out of the idea that, um, we did hear loud and clear that folks didn't want to pay for municipally-owned fiber, but people did say that they wanted us to help them get service to their homes where they didn't have it, get better levels of service where they had it. Um, save money through competition and, and these other things that, that have, you know, come out. And so this memo essentially puts together the framework for an ad hoc committee with that purpose. And, uh, a, a lot of this is standard language around quorum and public meetings. And, uh, you'll see something very similar when we get to the next, uh, item on the agenda, but the idea here is that we would formalize that, give them a scope, give them tasks, uh, and, uh, give them a timeframe to accomplish the goals.
Great. Yes, Catherine?
All right, two questions. One's a question, one's a comment. Um, so in number one, it says the committee term will be through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. And then in item four, it says the member term is they shall serve through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. So are we looking to appoint people for one year, and then if needed, appoint them for another year?
Oh, that was a typo, so it's up to you.
Well, I would say if it's a two-year committee, make it a two-year term.
Yep.
Um, so I would change item four to read twenty-twenty-five. Uh, and then I think it's very important that we make note of under tasks, one, two, three, four, and five, which in writing, um, I support what Eric just said verbally. Uh, we are not trying to recreate in any way, shape, or form what was put out to the voters and was voted down. This is a totally different thing, um, and, and that especially if you read, um, item two, it says, and recommend potential solutions with little or no tax impact. So this is not a second go-round of what we did last time. On, so I, I think it's important for anyone who wants to be involved in anybody who is watching what we're doing, that we are being extremely transparent here.
Good.
Can I make a?
Go ahead, Carol.
Yeah.
Sorry, um. I'm encouraged to see on the four bullet points above um, number three and number four, where it talks about Wi-Fi hotspots. Um. Apparently the, the schools do that a lot with students that don't have Wi-Fi. They just give a little device and there's your hotspot. Um, which doesn't cost anything, and I guess we have them readily available. And then competition, talking about, um, satellite options. One thing, if, if I go way, way, way back to the first survey about connectivity. Wasn't it only like two percent of the Reedfield population don't have internet connection? Was it something like just two percent?
No, I think what we came up with was there were, I think it was eighty-seven households didn't even have the option of having spectrum service out of like nine hundred, so that's approaching ten percent. And that doesn't mean, and what spectrum tells us doesn't mean that all of those other eight hundred-something households have internet. But they have the opportunity to have internet. That doesn't mean they can afford it and therefore use it. And I think that's one of the things we wanted to focus on in this go-around with the committee, is getting people to know that there's a thirty-dollar, well, it's only for another year, but a thirty-dollar, uh, reimbursement fee.
Well, and, and I think that you, you, you're probably right, Carol. I think that it was close to that, was when, when you add up DSL, cable, satellite, and people that have cellular, um, that, that does mean we have a lot of coverage, almost everybody, but still not everybody. Yeah.
I guess my question is, are we? Wouldn't it be, um, maybe a good step to survey those that are underserved? I mean, some of them might be camps that are down a dirt road, and maybe these people that come for a summer weekend want to be totally connected and don't care. Some of them may be elderly that would never use it. I guess, you know, when you say two percent are totally unconnected. Do many of that two percent, do they really want it? I mean, we're having these discussions of millions of dollars based on two percent, and we don't really know out of that two percent, how many are really wanting it. So it seems like before we go too far with another committee, we have some grasp on that. Um, and I, I am encouraged to see some of the other alternatives um, that we have on here that the committee might be looking at. I think that's, makes a lot of sense and kind of is, is a new and refreshing look at this whole problem. Um. So. I don't know if that would maybe make some sense.
Yeah, we're not talking anything in the millions. What we've talked about with spectrum with our franchise agreement and without divulging anything in terms of negotiations, the current franchise agreement, which has expired but remains in effect because of the legality of how franchise agreements work, stated that spectrum had to provide an increase in service area of X number of miles per Y unit of time. And we have no hard evidence that that ever occurred. And if we can show that it did not occur, or if they can show that it did, then we have bargaining power in our, in renewing our franchise agreement. So, uh, there's a possibility that spectrum would have to provide that coverage at zero cost to the town because it was in the agreement. And so that's the kind of thing that we're looking at here. Not spending any of our money, but holding spectrum to the agreement they already had with the town.
Yeah, I think if you look at the, um, the task for the committee, the last five points there, you know, the first one is assist the town manager in the select board with the negotiation of a franchise renewal. With, with chart, with charter spectrum, and then, you know, incorporate technical information and data, looking at connectivity issues, recommend solutions with little or no tax impact. Pursuing public outreach, education, engagement. I mean, really, Carol, that's part of that is just what you're suggesting. Shouldn't we like talk to people about what their needs are? And that's some of the stuff that's in these last five. Right? Looking at what, what is going on out there. It's not a, it's not about, you know, spending millions of dollars or any money, really.
No, my reference to the millions of dollars was not about anything we'd done since the vote. It was the exorbitant spending that the people voted down. That was my thing, saying we're taking a fresh look at totally new options that weren't even on the plate. Um. So that's where my reference to millions comes from, is the previous.
So I would make a motion to appoint the ad hoc just to create the ad hoc connectivity committee, um, pursuant to everything in this memo? Is that?
As presented?
That's a good one.
As outlined.
As outlined in this memo.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, to accept, uh, the ad hoc connectivity committee and all the documents, uh, therein. Uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Very good. Thank you, Carol, in the affirmative. We move to new business, hear an update, and consider a policy document for the ad hoc fairgrounds working group. Another ad hoc. It's the word of the night. Eric?
Sure. So, uh, same premise, um, that we have a, um, um, a, a group that, um, has a defined scope and purpose. Um. This, um, this one, I think, is a little bit different in that, um, we, we've had a, um, uh, a kind of a, uh, informal arrangement for a few months now. Uh, it's been working exceptionally well. I think it's critically important that that committee have the, um, the, the blasting and, and support and direction of, 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 um, of, of the board in as much as, um, uh, they found success already. Um, I don't want this to be perceived as the, the select board taking control of the committee or anything like that. This is just setting up, uh, a standard operational structure that, that gives credibility a, and support to a process that, that I think everybody has recognized is, is doing quite well. Um, I did send this out to the committee for comments. Um, I didn't hear anything back except for, from Greg, uh, Durgan, who, um, said that he thought it was okay, and um, uh, I, I don't know if he liked everything. He never really does, but he, he seemed generally, genuinely supportive. So I'll just put that out there.
He was nice to Greg earlier.
Well, he, he's a bit of a chop. He's a bit of a cynic. I can appreciate that. But cynics are important. So, absolutely. So, um, but in any event, I, I did send it out to the committee and, and, uh, didn't receive any, any, um, any negative feedback. I'll put it that way. Uh, and I think that this does hue pretty close to, to what the committee's been doing, uh, and allows them to continue to find success uh, in, in a format that, um, that we can stand up and say at town meeting or to anybody that asks that, yeah, these were public meetings. They were held uh, uh, transparently, and this committee is working, uh, under the direction of, of the select board, or at least maybe the oversight. Um, and I'll let Steve talk about the rest of it, because, uh, really, this is, uh, one of his areas of expertise.
Well, I, I don't think it requires a great deal of explanation. I mean, really, this is not changing the way we're going to operate. You know, it's just saying that this isn't a official. So we get little quotation marks around it, an ad hoc committee, and making sure that you know, which we are already doing anyway, making sure that, that anything that we do, um, comes before the public. You know, we're gonna have, like I said, we're already planning a public meeting in May. Um, after we meet one more time with the, with the architect. And, um, we'll continue to do that. We want this to be one hundred percent transparent. There is no no secrets here. So I, I think this is absolutely fine.
Go for it, Cap.
It's the Carol and Catherine show tonight. We are the ones with all the questions. Um, so this this, um, recommendation doesn't list a chair, vice chair. It does list a secretary. Is that because the two process leaders will be the ones taking on that role of scheduling meetings, making sure minutes are done, et cetera?
That is correct.
Excellent. And this is like fourteen people?
Up to.
Up to.
We, we've, I've seen meetings with twelve people that went very, very well.
Yeah.
And so would you entertain having no one from a committee? If it's up to? Or is it important that there be at least one?
And I think it's important to be at least one, but if, if they, if a committee that's listed here did not select someone, I would be stunned to start with, um, because they want the involvement, you know, and, uh, and if they did, I would, I think Jerry and I would work to extract someone.
I just don't want any committee to feel that they were slighted because they couldn't or didn't reply. Um.
I think we would make sure that they reply.
Okay, because I think they're all important.
Because we want the input. Yeah, they, they, they're critically important. I mean, that's been one of the the best things about these committees is that, that every single committee that's listed there has had some input that's been important.
Yeah. Could you read through those, Steve, just so we?
Yep, the Conservation Commission, the Rec Board, the Trails Committee, Age Friendly Committee, Cemetery Committee, and then the Select Board and the two process leaders. And for example, like one thing that we talked about is, is that in our initial plan, we want to at least make sure that there is some provision for being able to water the new field. And someone was on the, uh, committee from the Cemetery Committee, said, oh, the cemetery is talking about needing to have a water source at the cemetery. Also, we should combine those maybe, you know, it's like this. There's great, the, the breadth of the committee is really important. So.
You weren't done. Go ahead.
No, I'm done. I was gonna make a motion, but you go.
Yeah, I just, I'm not, I'm not good at English, so I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask.
Can do this in Irish?
Uh, yeah. So you know my thought about if it just says certain individuals, like so this up to and just these groups? Does the tasks inclu-, and number two of the tasks, whole public meetings, pursue outreach from solicit input from the community on matters concerning this? Does that encompass to you, when you read this, that talking to the other boards, talking to the folks at the union meeting house, talking to the folks at the library, talking to the snowmobile club? Do you think that includes that, or are we, I just want to make sure that people don't think those boards are the only people that have input or that direct component to this ad hoc, because I don't think it does. I think we've even had conversations at length, the historical societies involved in. So not having some of that, to me, I think we're missing a part, and I just want to ask, do we think those tasks make that a little grayer, so I feel a little better, or is it not enough?
Yeah, I, when it, when it says pursue other outreach to solicit input from the community. I kind of like that better than listing individual, because what if we don't list someone who wants to give us input?
Right, you know, oh, yeah. So I'm asking if you all feel that's covering that.
I, I like that.
What I want to make sure we're covering, because I do want to make sure that we are encompassing.
No, I, I totally.
Every club, every committee, every Girl Scout troop. Anybody that has a stake, you know, any, any group that can have a stake and an important feedback to this, to this.
I'd say absolutely, Sean. I mean, especially because like, the more we talk about more parking, the more I'm thinking, you know, we really need to talk to the road committee about parking on Church Road, uh, and, and, and access to that facility and, um, and what they think about parking there, uh, because it affects parking elsewhere. Um, and the fact that you're talking with this fairgrounds piece about satellite parking in other areas of town. To me, that just says, the road committee should be talking to you folks about that too. So I, 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 I certainly, uh, see that as, um, including but not limited to, and then, and, uh, at, at least in the two under organization and administration. And then the tasks, absolutely, bringing everybody.
Do you think on task, that's number two, though? Maybe we can expand it a little bit to increase, uh, to solicit input from the community? Other boards, clubs, or designated committees?
You got that? All right.
Sean, I totally.
Go ahead, Carol.
Sean, I totally agree, I was about to say the same thing that if, so the process leaders, those are like leadership positions in this group, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Has that been you, Steve?
That's been Jerry, that's been Jerry and I so far. We we have cool little caps that we get to wear as part of the process.
Can I add at least two members of the general public? Um, two or more, um, and I know there's some people that are close by um, residents. That the stuff that's going on at the fairgrounds will impact them, so can we just add maybe just two people from the general public? And possibly one or two people from the road committee, maybe one from the road committee, because they will be part of this as well.
All right.
I don't know, I'm I'm thinking that this is kind of trying to formalize, not kind of, I'm thinking that I was told this is trying to formalize a group that has already been meeting. To discuss all these things, so I'm not sure with a year to go if we want to expand it farther, I mean, fourteen is a lot of people already.
Well, but maybe the people that are more passionate about it would attend every single one, and if you want to say we had input from residents. Um, or neighbors to the project, I think that opens the appearance of not being. Uh, or a being transparent, that people are welcomed from in every meeting that are part of this group. I think that's where a lot of the committees, um. I I I just think we need to be very inclusive on this project from the get-go.
Well, I think that's what the public meetings help with, though, the fact that it is, it's not. Uh, if it's registered as an ad hoc, it's a public meeting, it's. It's open, I mean, it's there for people to witness, and we're doing public um, hearings on anything before. And I'm sure we'll have in a butters meeting as we've had with all our other projects.
But the public meetings are after a lot of the work has been done, and that's the thing, is then you have the public meeting and public input once. Everything's been drafted and everything's been met on for hours and hours and input, but lacking the input of. Just some general citizens that should have part of the say from the inception of it.
The good thing, Carol, is there's lots of vacancies on all these boards too, so they could, they could volunteer to be on some of these boards to be part of that input too.
But every meeting this group has held and will continue to hold have all been public meetings, is that correct, Steve?
Well, I mean, I don't think.
We advertised them on. We 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 started recently, so that's part of the reason we're doing this, because this had been, and and the select board is allowed to have committees that are meeting. As long as they're not, you know, deciding things, um, but it's much better to have committees meeting that that are that are doing so publicly. And then that's the direction we're headed in, that's the purpose of this, is to allow for that um, expanded public access and input.
So if we have the ad hoc, then we can, we can do things like starting to zoom it, things like that, so we're just.
If you goes to, yeah, yeah, you don't zoom a lot of meetings, but yeah.
Carol, I want to go back to your suggestion, though, because I don't, I don't disagree with you that we want it to be as open as possible, right? But right now, we tried super hard to get. The committees involved that had members that had issues with the last proposal that was voted down, right? To try to get input from people who had concerns already. And we worked on this consensus model of not agreeing on anything unless there is consensus, where everybody in the, in the, from all the committees agreed that it was something they could could live with. Right, and right now, we're at a stage where we have one more meeting with the architect. In two days, and then we're gonna go bring that to a public hearing. Where anybody can come, and then then that's not, it's not a final plan, it's that this is here for your input, right? So I would say that moving forward from from this, right? This first meeting on Thursday, I would assume if we approve this tonight, would be a public meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right? People could certainly come to that, but I think it would be really. Challenging to have them be part of that consensus building, where they would be coming into something that's been going on for a number of meetings. And would, not that we wouldn't welcome their input, but I think that the consensus model we've been using should still be involving the same groups. And then we will go to a public hearing, that'll also be a public meeting, and anything we do from that. Will all be public and all welcoming input from a butters, anybody in town, right?
But Steve, what you're saying is a landscape architect, I, when the project came out, the landscape architect. Had pages and pages and pages of fine specimens of evergreens and trees and shrubs and granules, and we paid a lot of money. For a landscape architect to tell us what specimens we need at the fairground property, which should be a place where families gather and kids play. And we've spent a lot, and so you're saying landscape architect has been involved again. And that's where, this is, this is a project for the people, I just, I don't, we have spent so much money on engineers and architects and lawyers and. Uh, that it's just, it's it's a project for the people, and and again, we're spending more money on a landscape architect on something that. We're now saying we should have input from everybody, and that's the thing, these are the same people that came up with the first plan. And again, you're saying, oh, you can come to a public meeting, well, I'm I'm gonna tell you, very honestly, I walked into that meeting. A week ago or so, in error, because I thought it was at a planning board meeting, and everybody looked at me like, what is she doing here? Honestly, and I got up and I realized I was at the wrong meeting, but I think we have to invite the public to be a part of it. And make sure, before doing all this work. It makes sense from. The concept of what it's supposed to be, a family gathering. Safe space where kids can go recreate and have something to do safely. And again, this is looking like um, the same project, to be honest with you.
Well, so.
And you took out the basketball court that our own Mr. Basketball of the state donated his winnings. For that basketball court, and I know there's people that are gonna have vast numbers of kids there, some may not be into softball. So hey, why don't you go over there and shoot some hoops or something? I, that's a big piece of this project, that people, a lot of people that know cash and know their kids, and there's not you. Okay, my daughter is on uh, unified, was on unified basketball, it was almost impossible, it was impossible to find a court. For the local special needs team to just go shoot some hoops, it was impossible. And there are people that are very passionate about that, and and you took it out, that's why I'm like. I don't agree with the direction this is going, it's the same people with the same focus on landscape, and this is. It's not an.
I've got it, I got it, we just are gonna get back here to the agenda, we're we're talking about.
Okay.
Um, getting this together, once we have the ad hoc committee, the meetings will be public, they can be involved. Uh, I don't want to, I I I appreciate it, thank you very much. Um, but Eric, are you looking for us to um, approve this and get this going?
Yeah, I I'd I'd like to, I just think it's important to 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 remember that, you know, part, that this is representative democracy, the select board's elected, they appoint people. Um, the committees are here to 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 work together, um, it's not an open, completely open format, it never, never is. Um, that's how, that's how these committees are structured, that's why, you know, the road committee has appointed members, that's why the select board has elected members. Um, you know, the public, just like they do at the select board meeting, has the ability to participate. Um, but but there's a li- always a little bit of um, of management of that, it's not necessarily a free for all. Um, and it's structured and organized, and part of the reason that that the select board has done um. Ad hoc committees and has all these guiding documents for standing committees, it's so that there's structure. Um, and so I guess, um, I understand what you're saying, Carol, about about access, and I think it's critically important. But I think it's also important to recognize that the select board has a responsibility um, to to set the parameters. And that's really what this is for, is setting some of those parameters to ensure that we have that um, organized. Um, and including, I think, in some cases, expert opinion, um, it's organized in a way that works um. For for the community, uh, but but, yeah, I'll just stop there.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to uh, appoint uh, the ad hoc or to. Formalize the ad hoc fairgrounds working group.
According.
According to this beautiful document before us.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to uh, approve the ad hoc fairgrounds working group as presented, um, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Very well, all opposed? Carol Doran boss in the negative, thank you very much. And last but not least, uh, the item here is twenty-three, one oh seven under new business.
Can we do it in one minute?
We can, uh, this is to consider an abatement for map uh, one nineteen lot fifteen five, this is why it's coming to the select board, it's older than one year. So in order for those abatements to be granted, uh, the say it has to come to the select board because it is old enough. Uh, however, in your packet, you could see that this was simply a mistake and should be corrected. That's all there is, Derek.
Um, just, um, we do have one more item, um, but I just, uh, in in the um, additional information, there was that, um, I referenced a Pike. Um, change.
Yes, okay, yeah.
But I just wanted to.
Motion to uh, extend the meeting for.
He made it for half an hour. Way to go, Sean.
So um, the abatement, again, let me just add here, the abatement that you see um, is for a home uh, that was improperly assessed taxes. Uh, it was sold, and so therefore, uh, this abatement is pretty self uh, is self-explanatory. However, again, it is coming to the select board because of the age of.
This is not for a home, this was for the storage unit.
Yes, the storage.
Right, so it was a storage unit that, this is a national company that kind of lost track of this, right?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, this is a different, it's not the storage unit, I apologize.
This is the one, um, it's for a a property on Nickerson Hill Road.
Got it, yeah.
So um, it was in the amount of thirty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, um, and I would make, I would hear a motion to accept this.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement, an amount of thirty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents for account number twenty-eight on map one one nine dash zero one five.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the abatement for uh, the Nickerson Hill Road for thirty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you, Steve, and Carol, you are in the affirmative as well. All right, our last item is a change order uh, that is um, originating uh, in the paving. Of Church Road, a change order is simply a request uh, to um. Uh, have a an item be added or a work, uh, the scope of work be changed. Um, and so uh, what Eric is was uh, was referring to was a change order uh, by Pike in regards to the church road paving. Eric, would you like to, are you looking for?
I asked him for the signature sheet, otherwise we'll never get it signed for.
Yeah, no, you're right. So Eric, this is for basically what you said at the beginning of the meeting, your town manager report, it's just, there's a section that we thought we could do something different with. That needs to be reclaimed and ground in, so then we put a better top, so it's gonna last us longer, right?
That's right.
And we need to approve the amount here, because that's in excess of the pre.
Previous authorization, yeah.
So I make a motion to approve the change order for Pike Industries at the sum of nineteen thousand nine hundred and eight dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Pike change order for nineteen thousand dollars, uh, nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars and change. Again, this is uh, helping us make sure that Church Road is uh, stable, secure, and not throwing good money after bad. Uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Very well, and Carol in the affirmative, ladies and gentlemen, it is eight forty-three PM.
I'm gonna run downstairs and get that document for you to sign, I don't know why it's not in my folder, but.
Okay, great, so we won't leave, but we'll adjourn.
Yes, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
It's been moved into seconded to adjourn, uh, any further discussion, all in favor? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.